The time is 6:30. This is a special closed session of the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Here.
Councilmember Solomon is absent. Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora.
Here.
Thank you.
Members, do we have any ex parte communications? Seeing and hearing none. This is the time for public comment. Members of the public who'd like to make comment on the closed session items can please come to the podium. Seeing... This is the closed session. Understood. Thank you, Fran. We have no public comment for closed session items. We'll be taking items 5.1 and 6.1 in a closed session. This is a... We're now be leaving to closed session.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
The time is 6:47. Member... Mr. Kennedy, could you please report from the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Mora. On a motion by Vice Mayor Carr, which was seconded by Councilmember Welch, the council voted five to zero to settle the claim for item 6.1.1, Claim of Jessica Fernandez in the amount of $7,505.44 for property damage incurred to her vehicle.
The time is 6:48. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 6:48. This is a special meeting of the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora.
Here. I'll now entertain a motion for approval of the final agenda.
Motion to approve final agenda.
Seconded.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. Members of the public can come to the podium for public comment. You'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Vicki Sewell. I'm a longtime citizen in Emeryville, and I'm here to talk to you about ECAP's Capital Campaign. We're moving into our new building September of this year, 2025, and we are all invited. I'll send you invitations. But the Capital Campaign is to help raise money for equipment for the building. Things like freezers, refrigerators, forklifts, pallet jacks, and a cardboard compressor for boxes. We could use that, and we could use some computers, phones, and any kind of office equipment. So if you know someone who sells used office equipment, send them our way. So that's the first thing. Our Capital Campaign, because we're moving in to our new building, and we want to thank the Housing Committee for all their help. The second thing is Mondays, every Monday of the week is Volunteer Monday. So if you come from 11 to 2, I'll be there to sign you up and help you walk through volunteering. I know you might not think you have a lot of power right now with our government, but you actually have the power to make someone's life a little bit better every day by making sure they have food. So you could come and volunteer. It'll make you feel a lot better. My last thing is, last month, ECAP provided food with the help of Islamic Cultural Center and the Latter Day Saints volunteers. We made 1,000 sandwiches for the Alameda County's Job Fair and Services. The Coliseum donated the space, and they were lovely. They were so helpful. And we had 100 vendors there. They were nonprofits and businesses. So there was like Xfinity, AT&amp;T, the Arnhem Workers of America, the Port of Oakland, Dennis, Lifeline Hospital, Hairdressers, LinkedIn, LinkedIn...
Thank you, Vicki, and thank you for the wonderful work you do for the community.
Will someone give me their two minutes? Okay.
Please go ahead.
Finish that LinkedIn helped them make their resumes. There was a photographer there for photographs for the homeless to have... There was Dress for Success. There was housing for veterans. There was housing for women at risk. There was housing for people with families. So if what I'm here to tell you, and I'll leave the information here and online and in your boxes, that if you know nonprofits or businesses that want to give jobs, April 2nd is Give a Second Chance Month from the Catholic National. Give a Second Chance. So the next job fair is for people who are let out of prison. It will be April 24th at the Coliseum. Same thing, vendors and people with jobs. And so let's just say you know someone who runs a halfway house or has a place for people with addictions or has job training. I know that the city council serves the community a lot, but if you know other people like that or companies that want to help, send them to Roxanne Baxter Green at Alameda County. She does the job services, and she's putting on this event. So that's it.
Thank you, Vicki.
Mayor, I'm sorry, you skipped ex parte communications.
Ah, yes. Any ex parte communications? Member Solomon.
I, in the last two weeks, saw Brooks Jessup, who's applying for the Emeryville Transportation Management Association. Socially, we didn't talk about the appointment, but just wanted to put that on the record.
Member Pryforce.
I received a communication from Celeste Burrows advocating for one of the applicants.
Same.
I received the email as well. Are there any other members of the public? Moving on to our action items. We have two action items. One is for the appointment to the Planning Commission, and the other one is for our Advisory Committee appointments. The city council will now interview the Planning Commissioner applicant. There is one applicant for one vacant position. Please note that the interview will take approximately 10 to 15 minutes. The applicant has two minutes to answer each question. Any remaining time will be allocated for follow-up questions by the city council. I'd like to invite the Planning Commission applicant to the podium. Welcome. As the mayor, I'll ask the first question. Why are you interested in serving on the city's Planning Commission? In your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, experience, and include any past civic involvement.
Hello, council. I'm Sam Gould, two-year resident of the Park Avenue neighborhood and highly engaged citizen. I have a deep history of civic involvement, having run a campaign for Emeryville City Council that was endorsed by firefighters, labor groups, and pro-housing groups. Last night, I was elected as an Assembly Delegate in AD 18 for the Democratic Party as part of a pro-housing slate. I also volunteer both with the city at beach cleanups and bike to wear every day, and am involved in advocacy groups like Bike East Bay and East Bay for Everyone. I also served on Emeryville's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, where I even contributed to the letter of support for that committee towards the grant we just received for 40th Street this past month, in addition to guiding development using objective standards and developing the city's wayfinding plan. I deeply love Emeryville and believe in the path it has set for itself going forward. I am committed to making sure we keep the promises we made in the general plan and the various planning documents it was amended with by tackling the housing crisis and reimagining how we use our streets to make them safer for everybody. My in-depth knowledge of the problems we face locally in regards to housing and transportation and experience working with advocacy groups to help tackle these problems drive me to help make Emeryville the best city it can be. Right now, serving our city on its planning commission is the best way it can help us achieve these goals. Thank you.
The second question. What do you see as your role as a Planning Commissioner?
So on paper, the role of a Planning Commissioner is to discuss and act on matters regarding to the growth and development of Emeryville. What this means in practice is carrying out the will of the general plan and the various planning documents it's been amended with, such as the housing element and active transportation plan. This can include making findings to grant permits and entitlements, initiating or conducting studies towards the development of Emeryville, or making recommendations to the council. In addition to this, I believe a Planning Commissioner has a duty to be an objective voice in carrying out their duties. Aesthetics are very subjective, and small disagreements can lead to delays that could kill projects, especially affordable housing that can be dependent on getting grants on certain schedules. Uncertain outcomes can greatly impact Uncertain outcomes can greatly impact potential projects. I also believe we have a duty to consider those that are not in the room with us, such as those that live in our city but might want to someday, or even those that just aren't as politically engaged but are still impacted by what we do here. As these people might not be able to come make public comments for various reasons, but their voice still matters.
Can you describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the past two years?
I have an in-depth knowledge of both the general plan and various other major planning documents that have been adopted in recent years. In fact, some of you may know that the Active Transportation Plan was and inspired my wife and I to move to Emeryville as we knew the city would provide an increasingly safe pedestrian environment for a future family. I am also very up to date on the progress of the implementation of this plan, both on my time as a member of BPAC and to this date. I have been closely following our implementation of the general plan goals too, including implementation of things like expanding access to park space in underserved neighborhoods, like we are doing with our Fortieth Street project, adding pocket parks along that corridor. I have read both the ATP and the Housing Element from end to end and strongly agree with the plan's conclusions and vision contained within. As a Planning Commissioner, I will uphold the Housing Element goals of new housing development, preservation of existing housing stock, addressing low-income housing needs and furthering fair housing, and addressing our current constraints on development. I am also aware we will soon be initiating a general plan update over the coming years, and I am excited for the chance to collaborate to help make Emeryville more accessible, livable, affordable, and equitable.
And the last fixed question before we take follow-up questions from the council. Can you give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process? Please explain why.
So one housing project that exemplifies my point of view regarding planning is the approved Affordable Housing Development at the Christie Sites near the public market. Being nearly three hundred seventy units of affordable housing made available to those making less than sixty percent of the area median income located in the core of Emeryville is already impressive enough, but many features of this project show the leading role Emeryville has towards tackling the regional housing crisis. Using funds from the overwhelmingly approved Measure C Affordable Housing Bond and streamlined with SB thirty-five, the Christie Sites project shows both the local and statewide efforts towards addressing the impacts of our housing shortage, including displacement and homelessness. This project will also expand our pedestrian infrastructure with a pedestrian promenade and expansion to Christie Park. Input was gathered from many committees, including my committee, BPAC, where I was serving my term, and the developers were very receptive to feedback, resulting in many positive adjustments to the open space on that site. The project is also located in the city core, where it has exceptionally good transit access. So through our parking maxims, we are able to provide more units for people rather than cars. The future Christie Loop project will only bolster this existing network. However, this project also showed some of the negatives of our existing processes. One Planning Commissioner argued to change the design of the project due to shadows at a cost of only a few units, but the future tenants who may have lived in those units could not show up to argue in their favor. If appointed, I plan to focus on positive outcomes that focus on the real impacts of our decisions.
Thank you, Sam. I will now take follow-up questions from the rest of the council. Members, do you have any questions for Sam?
Yes, I do.
Member Carr.
Thank you. Congratulations on your win on the AD eighteen. And I have a question for you, Sam. Given that Sutter is going to make its flagship, is going to establish its flagship center here in Emeryville, what would, do you see any changes happening with the Hollis Street, which had congestion already factored in when we were voting to make it pedestrian and transit for the mixed-use street?
That's a great question, actually. I was just thinking about this at a BPAC meeting last night. So the Sutter Project will change our neighborhood. It's sort of inevitable, and this process is going to take years to develop new language for the approved project. Because this site is changing the land use from biotech to this new hospital type of land, that means that it has to start over the approval process for the entire construction for that site. The initially approved two-hundred-foot building that was going to go at the corner of Horton and Fifty-third is most likely going to look nothing like it does right now. And one thing that will definitely change that I think some of the mitigation has already done a great job on is the parking garage on Horton, which is a bike boulevard, but now it has a parking garage with nineteen hundred spaces that's going to see regular hospital traffic. So I would love to see us concentrate the traffic as much as possible using diverters to prevent this hospital traffic from disrupting local streets, as well as keeping up our trend of raised bikeways to keep people out of the way of this increased car traffic. It is sort of inevitable that this will bring some noise and like do the ambulances and increased car traffic, but I also think there's a chance to capture this increased business use on the corridors like Hollis, where we currently have vacant storefronts. Right now, that corner of Hollis and Powell are vacant, mostly because there's not a lot of foot traffic there. But given a new hospital, I think we have the opportunity to make it a great space for people gathering there, not just workers at the hospital, but also patients, people coming to see those patients. So with smart planning, I think that it can be very positive economically for our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sam? I'd like to give the members, Member Pryforce.
Congratulations on the AD eighteen win. Going back to the AD eighteen win, in your candid statement, you made the statement, "My home city of Emeryville is the only city in the Bay Area to increase its black population by focusing on implementation of data-driven solutions to our housing crisis." Can you tell us a little bit more?
Definitely. So you might be aware that the percentage of demographics have changed. The percentage black population of Emeryville has decreased, but this has actually come with an increase in the actual number of black residents due to anti-displacement strategies we've implemented, such as concentrating new development in former industrial sites, like we have done recently with the Christie Sites and the Sherwin-Williams development, and focusing on eviction protections, like which already come through like SB three thirty from the state level, things like Right to Return and things like that. But I think that Emeryville's been doing a great job of adding units across the income spectrum. I know of reports coming to you soon. It was already seen at Planning Commission earlier about the progress we've been making towards our housing goals. And we've already met twenty percent of our low, very low-income housing target, mostly due to the fact that we have this new site at the south of our city, providing permanent supportive housing and transitional housing for those experiencing homelessness. So things like this are what makes Emeryville so special. And I also believe that just increasing the supply gives renters more options, which lets them compete with their landlords to negotiate lower rents, something we are actually seeing right now in Berkeley as they are seeing a supply shock as thousands of units have gone online, which has actually lowered rents even in rent-controlled units, which is basically unprecedented. And this is data that was collected in Berkeley through the Public Rental Registry. This is data that anyone can access and plot against market rate housing development, which shows that the key driver is supply. Not that we shouldn't focus on affordable housing like we have. I talked at length about the Christie Project and how important it is, but I think Emeryville is doing a lot of great work towards protecting residents of all types.
Yep. Member Pryforce.
So you mentioned Berkeley. You mentioned the state, but specifically in your candid statement, because I want to make sure you didn't use race as a prop in your candid statement, that you said data-driven solutions. So can you identify what those data-driven solutions in Emeryville were? And also, in terms of the population, by what percentage or number did the black population increase in Emeryville?
I'm sorry, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but the percentage.
Ballpark.
I really don't know. But the percentage did decrease, as I said, because it's all relative, but the absolute number did increase, which shows that we are not displacing people through our recent housing development. We're actually adding new people to our city, which is the data-driven solutions I'm talking about. Because there's this process known as filtering, where even like if you restrict the types of housing that are allowed to be built, it means that high-income people are now competing for the same housing stock as everyone else, which drives up the prices for everybody. When vacancy rates reach five percent and above, that's when now renters are able to compete for, or landlords have to compete for renters rather than renters competing for landlords, which gives them negotiating power against those landlords, which leads to lower rents.
Member Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Another question for you. Since we are talking about data-driven information to guide our decisions, one more question about the flagship of Sutter, flagship campus of Sutter going to be based in Emeryville. What, if any, changes would you consider for the Fortieth Street multimodal project in light of that moving to Emeryville?
So for the Fortieth Street project, I believe that we already account for ambulance traffic with the turn radiuses. I was just talking with the planner that attends the BPAC meetings that we already account for ambulances on all city streets. This is something we have to do so they are able to access anywhere. And we actually, on Fortieth Street, already built in a pad for these emergency services in front of the memory care unit at the corner of Horton and Fortieth Street. So I believe our project already does take into account all of these different uses, and I don't anticipate that we need to change that project, especially at this point where we've already secured funding and finalized the, or are close to finalizing the design. I would really recommend that project moves onward as is.
Thank you, Sam.
Sam, for closing remarks, is there anything you'd like to add as closing remarks to assist the city council in deliberation?
Of course. Well, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. I believe that my experience serving the city, history of civic involvement, and in-depth knowledge of housing and transportation laws, in addition to familiarity with the local challenges we face as a city, make me uniquely qualified as a Planning Commissioner. I would love to be given the opportunity to help keep our city the shining example for the rest of the region for how to build a people-centric city that is deeply committed to solving the problems that everyday citizens face. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Now is the time for public comment. Other members of the public who would like to comment on the appointment to the Planning Commission? Seeing no members of the public, I'll bring this back to the council for deliberation. Members? Member Welch.
I just wanted to thank Sam for applying to the Planning Commission. I think it's very clear, at least in my opinion, that he is very well-educated on both our general plan, obviously, the housing element, and has personal knowledge of both multiple projects, both housing, commercial, and transportation. And I think he has shown a deep interest in making sure that Emeryville is a place that is accessible and available for all people, of all modalities, of all abilities. And I think he would be a great fit on our Planning Commission, and I would be happy to make a motion to appoint him for the, I believe it's the term commencing April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
I'll second the motion. I also wanted to add some comments. Sam, I do appreciate your thoughtfulness. Seeing your gears turning already on upcoming developments in the city is very exciting. I think you'll be an asset to the commission. And I still find it unbelievable that you read our Active Transportation Plan in your free time. Very few people choose to do that. So thank you for your enthusiasm and your thoughtfulness that you bring to the city. So we have a motion and a second. Member Pryforce.
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate to have a deliberation before there are motions, just out of courtesy. So I have a couple of questions and some comments. Before I do, I asked a member of my church like how to address this scenario. She's very familiar with this scenario because she was, she observed the events of the sensor and sanction meeting. And, you know, she said, "Well, baby, you know, you gotta pray." And so before I ask my question, God, grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. So I'll start my first question to Madam Clerk. In terms of, so we have one applicant for a vacant position. I read the tweets and postings on Nextdoor and LinkedIn, and this throughout social media. What were the postings in terms of social media between now and I think I went back as far as September of two thousand twenty-four as relates to this vacant position?
Thank you, Councilmember Pryforce. This recruitment opened December twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, and closed on February the third, two thousand twenty-five. We post, all of our recruitments are posted on the city's three bulletin boards. The vacancies are on the city's website, the social media sites, which we have Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram, the ETV cable channel twenty-seven, and then we made announcements at the city council meetings. Additionally, the committee secretaries are also encouraged to distribute the notice of vacancies that is posted to their committee members and members of the public.
Yes, thank you. So I didn't see, I can check. I didn't see any social media postings. I didn't check Facebook, so I can do that. But I didn't see any social media postings because I believe we had around maybe three or four applicants for Planning Commission vacancies, and now we just have one. And I want to be, I want to make sure that we are amplifying these posts as much as possible. I believe we've had this issue before, and a recommendation was made for us to sort of step outside of our comfort zone when it comes to outreach. I would recommend we have the evil eye and we have the Emeryville tattler in terms of how most Emeryville residents get news. And that's still a small portion of Emeryville residents, but most Emeryville residents are not getting news from the website or from the bulletin boards. And so to potentially increase the, our applicant pool, I would like to make this suggestion to staff that we start reaching out to some of these publications and increase the frequency of our posts because one thing that I was informed of by residents was that they just did not know that this was, that this was happening. And every time someone says, "Well, check the city website," there have been thousands of people have laughed at me for making that suggestion. They believe that we need to improve our communication, and I believe that that has been a recurrent theme. And so I, you know, things I can't control. If I could control this, I actually, because it's only one applicant, I don't think that's fair for the city that we allow more time for other applicants, at least one more person to apply for. Because the planning commissioning, the planning commission is a very important role. And so I think it's important to, if we find out that we have only one person applying, then we need to, you know, perhaps put it on hold and. then we need to, you know, perhaps put it on hold and do better outreach in order to get someone else so that, you know, it's at least a little bit fair. Right now, to go from three to four applicants to just one applicant just seems like a miss on the city. And so, so that is a recommendation I like to make to staff and to the city manager that we do better when it comes to our outreach and start implementing practices that is better than what we're, what we're doing now because we see the results, of course. And so, and thanks to all you applicants who are actually having to interview against other people, even if it's one other person, that's at least fair for the city. So thank you for that. The other is comments about Sam Gould. And I want to take some time to read some comments from Sam Gould, who I believe is a very problematic figure. The city decided not to elect him as, as a, as a, as a council member and for, you know, for good reason. And so, you know, I mean, once again, there's nothing that I can do. You know, I think that Sam Gould is the best example of why we need an independent public ethics commission in Emeryville because this process is needs, we need to do better by the city of Emeryville. So after posting about the loss of black homeownership in Emeryville, Sam Gould wrote Kalima, and this is before, because I haven't gotten to when he was actually a committee member. This is before he became committee member. I think it was actually maybe a week before he joined our committees. Actually, this is stupider than I thought. This is a graph of percentages over time. So obviously, if new apartments get built, more, more people move in, which is like his argument, displacing no one and letting them keep their homes, but still decreasing, decreasing the percentage of family houses. You know, I can't believe you posted this chart thinking it was a dunk, lol, right? And so, and like a lot of comments that are negative, the best thing to do is to ignore those comments and just keep on doing the work, but not for Sam Gould. He then replied to his own comment, "I can't stop thinking about how bad this graph is. So sorry, I keep spamming, ha, ha, ha." Are you trying to tell me that 2019 had the highest black ownership of homes in the past 15 years? You know, and then he goes on and on and on. So then what do you recommend someone like me do? What would you do in a professional capacity? You would ignore, and you keep on doing the work. Did that stop him? No. I'm dying laughing at this. 2021, literally, the only group increasing as a percentage was Latinos. And as you can see, he couldn't even share what those percentages are, what those numbers are. Yeah, so here's a situation where, you know, you just ignore someone who is obviously engaging in behavior that, you know, you think is, okay, yeah, this is, it's not, I don't want to invest time in this. But Sam Gould just kept going. And this isn't the last time I would hear from Sam Gould online. And of course, I just shared with the city manager, as I shared with the Emeryville public in exchange of emails between the city manager and I, wherein I shared my concerns about Sam Gould's behavior. So there is this, a history of problematic behavior coming from Sam Gould. But while he was a committee member, Sam Gould decided to tweet, you know, "Absolutely pathetic. An elected official is celebrating someone being run out of office with death threats posted on the front door of their house. Pryforce has absolutely no shame." And, and I don't know if anyone could see that, you know, he's kind of smiling and nodding. And I think that that is the reason why we need an independent public ethics commission. Because if it's being made public, your behavior, and that your behavior is not something that best exemplifies what it is to, to hold some of these positions, that you just don't smile and nod because you know, you know that the process and the system itself isn't going to do anything about it. And that is why we need to return the power back to the people through an independent public ethics commission. You know, and, you know, I've shared other comments from Sam Gould. Once again, you know, I read that prayer for a reason because it's, it's nothing I can't control. It's, you know, it tends to be one to four, but I don't believe that Sam Gould is someone who should be taking on any positions appointed or even appointed. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that he, he should be taking on any, any of these positions. And those are my comments.
Before calling the roll, are there any other member comments? Madam Clerk, the roll?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Sam. Moving to item 6.2, these are the advisory body appointments. The overview is we have a bike pedestrian advisory committee with two vacancies and four applicants. We have a commission on aging with one vacancy and one applicant. Housing committee has two vacancies and five applicants. And the Emeryville Transportation Management Association has two vacancies and two applicants. So we'll start with the bike pedestrian advisory committee, and we'll be taking, we'll be, before the council deliberates, we'll, we'll hear from all the applicants, then we'll take public comment, and then the council will deliberate. So first, let's take the bike pedestrian advisory committee. Will all the applicants for the bike pedestrian committee, please come to the podium one at a time and introduce yourselves and make a short statement about your qualifications, your education, and your desire to serve on the committee. You will have two minutes each, and then council members will have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicants. Bike pedestrian committee? Yes, please come to the podium.
Good evening, council members. My name is Julie Flynn. I'm a resident of Emeryville. I live on Ocean Avenue. I am excited to be considered today in a professional capacity. I've worked for the city of San Francisco, but by trade, I'm a, or active transportation urban planner and designer. I'm a principal at a small firm that does this kind of work around the country. On a personal level, I moved to Emeryville in early 2023, and just being able to bike and walk my children to school nearby has been a huge asset for me, living in the city. I feel, you know, for the city of its size, the progressive infrastructure that we have has been really impressive, and it's just a really wonderful part of my life and my family's life. So, yeah, I would be really excited to have the opportunity to kind of work as a volunteer, you know, to kind of support more of this in the city and make biking and walking more possible and more enjoyable and safer for diverse range of residents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have any other bike pedestrian committee applicants? Piper Cook, Lauren Morgan, or Natalie Stitch? Okay, let's move on to the committee on aging. We have one applicant. Is Diane? We're going to be hearing from all the applicants, as I said previously, and then we'll be doing public comment before deliberation. Diane Woods?
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have, my name's Diane Rush Woods. My background is that I'm a social worker. I am the co-founder of the MSW program at Cal State East Bay, a professor, and I practiced as a psychotherapist for an extended period of time also. In terms of aging, so 20 years as a professor and administrator at Cal State East Bay and an advocate, and I've lived in Emeryville since, when? 1972, you know, on and off. So, and really embraced the concept of aging in place and what that meant and what the structure had to be to allow people to do that. As I grow older, I understand more and more the commitment of aging, allowing people to age in place. I also participate in the Senior Center. I have been kind of out-zoomed by somebody who was 85 years old, but that's okay, that's shaming. But, you know, I know that there are things that you can do to make people feel important, to make them feel like they are part of a community. It takes commitment, it takes some vision, and there are lots of holes that occur for people as they age. I understand dementia and Alzheimer's, unfortunately, because of friends around me. And I know that if we are going to keep people in the community, then there have to be resources available to them. And when I'm in the Senior Center, I see people who do need resources. You know, it may be food, it may be transportation, there are a variety of things that people need. They also need friendship and community. So I am interested in participating. And I'll stop before my two minutes are up.
Thank you, Diane. So we'll hear from all the applicants, and then I'll ask the council if they have any questions from specific applicants at the end. For the housing committee, any member or any members of the public or applicants for the housing committee can please come to the podium. Welcome, you'll have two minutes.
My name is Tyler Hill. I'm a proud UC Berkeley alumni, and I purchased my home in Emeryville in 2022. I'm originally from Los Angeles, and prior to that, returning to the Bay Area, I resided in Arlington, Virginia. And 2018, Arlington County announced Amazon's decision to develop its second headquarters in Pentagon City, Virginia. And while I was living there in real time, I watched the city proactively, diligently, thoughtfully at times, think about what housing would look like for the up-and-coming residents who are coming to Arlington, but then also current residents, ensuring that they weren't going to be forgotten amidst the evolution and expansion of the city at that time. And I'd argue this evening that in the midst of everything that's happening in Emeryville, that we are on the brink of the same evolution and expansion as a city. With recent announcements such as the Sutter Health Expansion and Block Ventures' purchase of the office property on Shelman Street, it's critical that Emeryville gets housing correct. And while it's great that housing is built, it's just as important that it's accessible, affordable, and safe. And so if selected to join this committee, I would support many of the efforts already in place to ensure that these three spheres are already satisfied and continue to be satisfied. Efforts that I've seen, such as the Emeryville Accessible Living Initiative, the Special Needs Housing Initiative, BMR Program, First-Time Home Buyer Down Payment Assistance Program, and the Foreclosure Rescue Scam Assistance Program, just to name a few. And as a millennial in tech, I'd also prioritize finding ways to be more efficient and using technology to really innovate housing solutions, ensuring that Emeryville is a place for people to reside for the long term. And so I thank you for consideration of my...
Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Other applicants for the housing committee?
Good evening. I'm Dolores D. Johnson with Dolores D. Johnson Real Estate. I have my own business, real estate. I've always loved housing because that is one of the basic needs everybody needs besides shelter and, I mean, besides food and clothing, they definitely need shelter. So at age 22, I purchased my first house out on 104th Ave and been influencing other people to purchase their home. And also, I just believe that everybody needs shelter. And I sit on the Alameda County Tax Assessment Board because I'm trying to get people to fight for those high tax bills that they have to pay because property taxes are too high. So when I know something is wrong, I try to be a part of the solution. So being on the housing committee will also help me to educate people about Emeryville's housing. I just got a buyer the other day who's utilizing the Emeryville's $200,000 grant program. So she, I ran into her at the store, she said that she's not computer literate, and the agent that she had is not helping her. So I said, well, I'll help you upload your documents. So her documents are due tomorrow at 5:00. So I will be up all night, I'm sure, trying to get those documents into the system. So again, I'm just a helper. I like helping people, and housing is so major in my heart, so I just want everybody to have shelter or educate. I helped a couple of people who were on Section 8 become homeowners because they didn't know that existed a few years ago. So again, I'm just an advocate for how people get into homes.
Thank you, Dolores. Welcome, Fran.
Yes, hello. Nice to see you all. So I'm Fran Quatell. I'm a longtime Emeryville resident. I believe, first of all, committees are a great way to serve in our city. They're a great, great way for people to really come to know, I see Chad nodding, come to know the process of the city. I served on the Budget Advisory Committee for about eight years and was recently appointed to the Economic Development Committee. My signature lifetime achievement was a pro bono effort that helped amend the Dodd-Frank Financial Reform Bill, restoring $270 million to 9,500 bank depositors pro bono. My claim to fame is that I do my homework. The reason I want to apply for the housing committee is that I support the super work of Valerie Bernardo and her excellent reporting, and the things, the extraordinary things our city does to help people come and live here and stay here. My particular focus right now is a concern about the older properties we have in the city of Emeryville, the older condominiums, that have lost their conventional mortgage lending. That means that they don't have Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac lending. And for many of these properties, insurance costs and repair costs are very high, and I want to make sure that people who live here, who own here, will be able to stay in their homes here. And this is one thing that I've been thinking about, and I think it's something to study. That is particularly why I'm applying to serve on this committee. Thank you for considering me.
Thank you, Fran. Any other applicants?
Hello again, council. I'm Sam Gould, and I know I already spoke at length about my qualifications during the Planning Commission interview, so I'll expand on my housing experience at this time. On the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, I helped develop objective standards that included low-cost ways to increase the quality of housing that is approved within our city. On this committee, I also assisted below-market rate housing projects with designed feedback, excuse me, to improve pedestrian flow and comfort. On the advocacy side, I work with East Bay for Everyone to help upzone high-resource areas like Rock Ridge, making them more accessible to those who cannot afford to own a home. We also supported various state bills like SB 35 and SB 423, which are already having an effect in Emeryville, streamlining affordable housing production, in addition to bills like SB 330, which help implement right-to-return for tenants and eviction protection for renters. We have also done a lot of work towards legalizing social housing projects by advocating... also done a lot of work towards legalizing social housing projects by advocating, by increasing the quality of housing. Sorry. We have done a lot of work towards legalizing social housing projects and adjustments to condo defect liability laws to try to increase the ownership opportunities that residents have. I don't know if you're aware of this, but currently condos have, are really hard to make ownership because of liability laws that essentially make it for 10 years. They are effectively uninsurable because you can sue the constructor for any defects in that property, which makes it really hard to build dense ownership housing, which is exactly what our city needs. So on this front, I believe that my experience allows me to effectively work towards more affordable and better-quality housing in Emeryville as part of the Housing Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Is Holden Reyes here? Let's move on to the applicants for the Emeryville Transportation Management Association. Applicants, please come to the podium. Welcome, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Bobby Lee. I'm seeking your support for my reappointment to the ETMA Board, where I've served for nine years, including as its current Board Chair for the last few years. The Emory Go-Around is a critical lifeline service for our community, providing reliable, fare-free transportation. However, we're facing pressing challenges as we adapt to changing post-COVID ridership demands, fewer workers returning to the office, and rising operational costs. During my time on the Board, I have spearheaded key initiatives such as leading the development of a 10-year strategic plan to align resources and vision with our community's needs, launching a fleet renewal program for modernizing our vehicles, focusing on electric vehicles, alternative fuels, and autonomous technologies, while simultaneously working on better onboard technologies to improve data analysis for better operational decision-making, and enhancing safety for riders at the MacArthur-Bart stop in particular, including advocating for and helping Bart directors and staff to expedite a new lighting project at the 40th Street underpass that enhances safety for every go-around rider who's waiting for the next shuttle. I invite you to learn more about my other work on this board and my application. My years of professional experience in transit technology, development, marketing, business development, and public relations has prepared me to navigate these challenges. I live and breathe transit day in and day out, both as a personal passion and my current role working in public relations for the SFMTA. As we approach the PBIT Assessment Renewal and the opening of the Sutter Hospital, the ETMA Board must be staffed with experienced hands to help guide it. If reappointed, I will prioritize our residents and residential ratepayers' interests pursuing innovative solutions for an improved rider experience and seeking out cost efficiencies to ensure that the Emory Go-Around continues to thrive for years to come. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Bobby. Welcome.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Brooks Jessup. Forgive me, I planned for three minutes, so I might speak a little bit quickly. So I want to start out by emphasizing that the ETMA Board is unlike any of the other committees you're making appointments to here tonight. It's not simply an advisory council. It is rather a board of directors with the executive authority over, as Bobby was just explaining, a critical component of our transportation system, the Emory Go-Around Shuttle Service. Also, the City Council only gets to appoint two community members in total to the Board, and the other eight members represent corporate interests and are not appointed by the City Council. So I urge you to take special care and consideration in making these two community member appointments. So first, I urge you to appoint members who are committed to showing up and participating in the monthly meetings. At a bare minimum, I understand that the ETMA Board has had attendance issues and was unable to achieve a quorum for its most recent meeting just a couple weeks ago. I take this issue very seriously. And in fact, one of the main reasons that I vacated my seat on a popular committee like BPAC last year was to help solve a similar attendance problem on the Housing Committee. And I'm encouraged by all the Housing Committee applicants here tonight. Second, I urge you to appoint members who are regular riders of the Emory Go-Around and can represent the interests of the rider community. For my part, I depend on the Emory Express to get me to and from Bart on my commute every day to San Francisco. While I'm on the shuttle, I often interact with other riders and the drivers as well, learning about their experience and opinions on the service, about the service. So for example, I recently met a rider from the nearby Artist Co-op who, on a cold rainy morning, made the excellent point that there's no bus shelter for residents of the neighborhood who don't live at the Emory but still want to use this service on this line. Finally, I urge you to appoint members who have professional expertise in transportation and transit. I will leave it there.
Thank you for your application.
Thank you.
I believe that's all of the applicants for the committees. I'd like to ask the Council if they have any specific questions. Oh, yes, April.
Mayor, apologies. We received an email at 6:30 PM from applicant Lauren Morgan for the BPAC that she had a family, or that they had a family emergency and wouldn't be able to attend. That was the only person that I heard from that is not present.
Thank you, April.
Thank you.
Are there any specific questions that members have for any of the applicants? Member Pryforce.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to need Brooke Jessup's help on this one. This is not particularly about your, your application, but
Brooks, you could come to the podium.
Yeah, when it comes to the Housing Committee. So based on the, because Valerie's not here, or I would ask her, and I put the pressure on you, but based on the, I believe the discussion was brought up about diversity and diversifying, I think, all of our committees. And we, and we talked about like the range of diversity, right? Not just racial, ethnic, but in terms of homeownership versus renters, age, and, you know, gender, you know, accessibility. And so based upon the current makeup of the Housing Committees, what would be your recommendations in terms of applicants that we're, that we're considering?
Okay, yes, I do remember that discussion at the last meeting. And I think, I think what we need on the Housing Committee, first of all, we just need members, right? And that's been an issue. And I think that, so we, I think we do need, as you said, some homeownership represented on the committee. I think we need racial diversity on the committee as well, based on just the last meeting, which was the first meeting we had that we came together in at least six, maybe more, months. And the makeup of the committee had changed quite a lot. But at the last committee meeting, for those who were present, I think that we lacked racial diversity, and so I would recommend that. I think that we, also we need geographical diversity from across the different neighborhoods in Emeryville as well to be represented. We had a pretty good balance in terms of age representation, I thought, at the last meeting, but that also needs to be, continue to be a component, I think, of the voices represented on the committee. I think we, we definitely need voices from those who are living in the below-market-rate housing, because a lot of the issues that we're talking about, that we're, that we've been addressing in the committee meetings do affect that component of, of our, of our residents, of our community. And so I think that, that component also needs to be represented.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions of any of the applicants? Member Pryforce.
So based upon what I've just heard, and for the applicants in terms of the Housing Committee, a quick, there's a quick question of, will you be able to make it more often? Because I believe that the Housing Committee, it's, it's being recommended to meet monthly. And so, so that's something that's really important, is that if you're able to make it monthly to the Housing Committee, because there's so much that needs to be covered. Because as was just shared, for about six months, it was pretty much inactive in terms of meeting. So that's a real quick, just, that's a yes or no. You can do it? Okay, great. The other is in terms of, from, I, I believe that there's no one who's, who's applying that is in that rare BMR renter category. And I mean rare, meaning in terms of showing up on the Housing Committee. I don't think we really had anyone from the BMR renter community. We had a BMR homeowner, but we never really had anyone, BMR renter. And as it stands, BMR renters don't really have any tenant protections in Emeryville. They're, they're not, those tenant protections are not coming from the state, because the state pretty much gives the city, hey, you know, you're, you're supposed to be protecting your, your, your BMRs. And so, so the question I have is, so the quick question of, you know, yes or no, can you do it? Can you make it? And then the other is, what do you think are, are the steps, the steps that we can take to further protect our below-market renters? And just removing the term BMR, because that's just such a convoluted corporate term, just low-income renters, you know, the people who are, you know, check, check, just trying to pay rent and, and, you know, the rest of their income, just trying to survive. What is it that we can do to better protect, that you would bring to, to the Housing Committee? So that's the question I would have to all the applicants.
So members of the Housing Committee, member Pryforce asked two, or sorry, applicants, Pryforce asked two questions. I just want to clarify. One is on attendance. Are you able to attend the meetings? So a commitment to do that. And I'd also like to note that the meetings are every other month. And then the second question was, was it renter protections?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but it's actually been, been recommended at that meeting that they become monthly. We haven't said yes yet, yet, but that's the recommendation. That's where things are going. So that's, sorry to correct you.
Thank you. And then renter protections was the second question?
Yes. What, what recommendations would they make to, for, to better, to better protect our BMR, our low-income, low-income renters in Emeryville? Yeah, in terms of tenant protections.
So I'll invite applicants for the Housing Committee to come respond to the questions at the podium.
I'm Fran Quatell. I honestly can't answer your second question yet. I'm a pretty good student, and I have spent my life recruiting in the software industry and working on workforce issues. So that is something that I could add by looking at how people earn a living and do they have potential for, for working. In terms of the meetings, yes, I can make a monthly meeting. However, I want to say something that I know you'll do anyway. The members of the Council will appoint, I feel, the best people to serve on the committee. And I thank you for that deliberation, however it works. I feel my strength at the moment is looking at the thousands of units, I would say a couple of thousand owned units that are older units, that are in a particular segment that isn't addressed yet by the Housing Committee. So that's something that I am thinking of very strongly.
Hi there. So the first question, yes, I can attend a monthly meeting. Second question, so I am a homeowner, so I don't personally deal with the challenges that a BMR renter does face in the city. I am aware of multiple state-level laws that do protect renters. There are anti-rent gouging laws where rent cannot increase above inflation plus a certain percent. There are also things like SB 330, as I mentioned in my previous talk, that guarantee renters' right to return if their property faces development challenges or eviction protections if they are unable to pay rent. I do think there is more as a city that we can be doing, such as providing legal services to renters, that some of our neighboring cities like Berkeley are very good at doing, because landlords are very powerful, and it's very hard for a renter to face some giant corporation by themselves. So I don't fully understand what our city offers in that respect, but I think that at least access to the resources should be improved, because I've had many people come up to me as I was campaigning, asking how they can fight these corporate landlords and looking at the city's website. I, I even struggle, like, I feel like I know everything about the city, but I can't find resources to help protect renters. So I think there is an information thing that can be improved, as well as offering better services for people that can't afford them themselves. Because if they're already struggling with rent, then they can't provide legal services as well on top of that. Thank you.
Please ask, when will the meetings be before I commit? Is it a Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night? What time? Oh, yeah, I'm able to make that. Okay. So the other question. Being on the Housing Committee, would we have access to all those that are BMR rentals and maybe contact them on a monthly or bimonthly or quarterly, educating them on what their rights are as a BMR renter? Educating them on what, how we can help them stay?
I was saying, as a Housing Committee member, would we have access to all the BMR renters?
Is staff able to answer that question?
We, I'm sorry, this Chad Smalling, Community Development Director. We do not maintain a contact list of every BMR tenant necessarily. We do receive information about them as a part of annual monitoring, and we know which units have, or are in the BMR program. It might require some exploration with the city attorney's office as to whether we can disclose that list of tenants. But it is, the ability to communicate with the BMR tenant population is something that we, we have talked about as staff in past meetings.
But the question is, is what would you do? Yeah, what would you recommend?
We would either send them out to their house, or either try to get them on a Facebook page or something about BMR renters, but to educate them on what their rights are. And you would send us out, like I said, it could be monthly, bimonthly, or quarterly, but just keep them updated on what we discover are their rights. Educate them on their rights.
Thank you, Dolores. Tyler?
I'm available to attend the monthly meetings. The first question. The second question, I plus one to all the previous comments about providing resources. I am an attorney by trade. I think that it's great to provide them with the information, but it also needs to be information that's digestible and not in the legalese and statutory language, so that BMR folks who can just comprehend it, even people who aren't regular people in the day-to-day can't always understand the language there. Some examples, I know I previously worked at the Alameda County Superior Courthouse. The East Bay Community Law Center used to have landlord and tenant rights workshops, so it wasn't just landlords getting access, it was also tenants. So something like that would be a great opportunity. And then also, I'm not sure if it's still getting funded, but the Self-Help Center in Alameda County used to also help tenants with evictions and things of that nature, stays, other types of resources. So I would also just plus one to those as opportunities and resources, and resources coming to them as opposed to us expecting them to seek out those resources.
Thank you. Any other member questions for any of the applicants? I actually had one for, sorry, Member Pryforce.
No, 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 you go. Take turns.
So for the applicants for the Emeryville Transportation Management Association, at one of the recent meetings, the ETMA at one of the recent meetings, the ETMA approved a modification to their long-term plan to add electrification and autonomy, with the, the objective of those changes were to basically kind of bring the Emory Go-Around into the future with electrification and take advantage of some of the advances that we've seen in autonomous vehicles lately, and also looking at other nearby jurisdictions that are exploring this as a way to increase the number of shuttles serving cities without necessarily increasing costs and doing it in a clean way. So, I'd like to hear what your thoughts are from both applicants on what are some of the next steps to bring this long-term strategy into reality?
Yeah, happy to answer that question. The state of alternative fuel vehicles in this, in this shuttle size, a 30 to 35-foot cutaway shuttle size, there's very few manufacturers in this space. And what the issue that leads to is that there are, there's not a lot of choice for, for finding a vehicle to address the needs of the community and the ridership. But that means we have to look at a wider swath of vehicles that are out there. And I've been to many, many, you know, events to look at a lot of these vehicles, and some of the challenges that, that we face is with cost. Luckily, we're in a situation where subsidies, grants, and so on are, are out there, and it's a matter of finding the right combination of the right vehicle at the right price, with the right technology, with the right amount of subsidy. Today, a vehicle, a diesel vehicle for the Emory Go-Around costs somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000, $175,000 to purchase. The closest comparable vehicle that's all-electric is about $750,000. It's many multiples more. It's, it's completely out of our budget, and we need the help of the state, local, regional agencies. So, one of the things I've asked our executive director to, to take a look at and to engage with folks at the Air Quality District and CARB, to look at custom grants, to look at vehicle buyback grants, to look at settlements funds that are out there to help us pursue these vehicles. But it's not just the vehicles that we have to worry about, it's the infrastructure as well. It's charging, if it is alternative fuel, if it's autonomous vehicles, how do we ensure that, you know, if there's a special requirement for them, how do we ensure we can accommodate that? And to ensure that we can accommodate it in, in the yard as well. There, there is another peculiarity to, no, sorry. Okay.
No, please, continue.
Okay. There is another peculiarity to, to the situation as we, as we've continued to investigate, is that where our bus yard is today under the MacArthur Maze, there have been challenges from Caltrans to allow us to house vehicles of alternative fuels, particularly electric battery vehicles. You may be aware that in Southern California, last year, there was a very large fire underneath the I-10 that prompted the State Transportation Agency and Caltrans to rethink insurance requirements and also vehicle storage rules. And that has affected many lease lesses, including us, who are under a freeway. So, we are working through a lot of these insurance requirements to figure out what can we bring onto the site to house? And if, if there is a vehicle that, you know, that, that we can't house under there, then we're going to have to find another, yet another facility. So, there's, there's a lot of dependencies and challenges that we're looking at, but we're working through it. There, there are opportunities. We're trying to find the right combination to make it work. And I know I've been focusing a lot on actual propulsion, but, you know, autonomous vehicles as well. I mean, been out there, take a look at the Portera, you know, they have a, I believe they call it Category 4 AV bus that can pull into and pull out of a stop on its own. These are all technologies that, that I've looked at personally, have visited the manufacturers, and I'm encouraged to see, but we're sort of at that, we need to wait for the next half step of generation for us to really see that scale. And I'm, I'm wanting to put us in the position to take advantage of that when that happens, and also to bring that, you know, sort of funding in place.
Just to follow up to one of the points you made about the size of the vehicle and finding a suitable replacement, have you considered augmenting the fleet, the variety of vehicles, where you could have smaller vehicles, maybe better suited for certain times of the day when ridership might be lower?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, right now, the Emory Go-Around runs from, you know, approximately 6:00 AM to approximately 10:00 PM. We know that there are service industry employees that would like to take transit after 10:00 PM. We know there are other use cases for that. We have discussed at length at the board ideas like on-demand, like ride hail subsidized, which has, has become popular in some areas. But yes, smaller vehicles as well. Those exist out there. We have engaged with, with folks, the companies that, that do create these new forms, you know, four-seaters, six-seaters, to think about how we can make it work. But we also have to be sensitive to the fact that we have a unionized operator workforce as well. So, there are, again, complexities there. But I, I, my vision, and what I would love to see the Emory Go-Around move to, was a 24-hour model, but to do so in a way that is cost-effective, and smaller vehicles, you know, vehicles that are autonomous, that are four-seaters, or could it be a smaller van? You know, we're very much open. I'm, I'm taking a look at all of them.
Thank you, Bobby.
I, I very much welcome these questions. I think that the Emory Go-Around, unfortunately, is at a point where, and I think Bobby has, has done a great job with this, with the new long-term strategic plan, to sort of start to rethink in creative and innovative ways how to get Emory Go-Around to recover the ridership, the shuttle, of the shuttle service, which is at less than 50% that it was before the pandemic, which is way behind the recovery of other transit services in the Bay Area. Muni, for example, is at about 80%. So, we need innovative thinking. So, I think these, these are great questions. In terms of electrification, I do not know all the, I'm not familiar with all of the economics that Bobby was discussing with respect to the fleet, but I, I am aware that six of the 21 current vehicles are up for, are for renewal this year. It seems like an opportunity to look at some of these questions. I'm certainly all for electrifying vehicles to provide an example for sustainable transportation within the city. I think the, you know, the city and the city's vehicles should, should provide that kind of leadership. With respect to AVs, I have served for the past two years on the autonomous vehicle policy team at the SFMTA, tracking the impact of autonomous vehicles on the transportation system in the city of San Francisco. That impact has not all been positive, and we have tracked the impact on first responders, on the safety of the system, on pedestrians and other vulnerable road users. There's a lot to consider when it comes to autonomous vehicles, and particularly when it comes to autonomous shuttles as well. I think the, we would want to look at the lessons that have, that came out of the Treasure Island Shuttle Pilot, Autonomous Shuttle Pilot, just last, just this past year, and they were not terribly encouraging in some way. So, I think that there's a lot to think about there. I think it's, these are exciting topics, but I would caution that we would move cautiously and carefully, as was mentioned, looking at the way similar programs have, what kind of results they've had in the, in this, in these areas. Oh, I also want to say, smaller vehicles and thinking about vehicle size is a really great innovation that may not be so sexy in terms of like, in terms of technology. But I, I mentioned earlier, I ride the Emory Express. That is a smaller vehicle. It is, it was basically full on my way home, my way here from work today. It has been a real success as far as my experience, from, from what I've seen in terms of ridership on that vehicle. And it is a smaller vehicle and a different type of route. And I, I think that it, it, it could unlock, you know, some of the types of lessons that could be extended to the rest of the service and some of the kind of innovative thinking that may not be, you know, so advanced in terms of technology, but may help to advance the ridership and the performance of the, of the shuttle service. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooks. Other questions for applicants? I'd like to now open a public comment for the advisory bodies. Any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please come to the podium. You'll have two minutes.
May I speak?
Yes.
I just want to say that I have a very specific idea about what I might add to the Housing Committee, and if that is not the focus of the Housing Committee, or something that will come before it in the next term, I certainly welcome not being considered. So, please don't, please keep that in mind. That's.
Thank you, Fran.
Can I speak a little bit about NACTO? That's the stance, that's an acronym. It stands for the National Association of City Transportation Officials. And it's a body that the city of Emeryville signs on to, and that's how we know where to like, put our stop signs and where to put our crosswalks, like, you know, precise measurements. And it also informs us about our Bicycle Boulevard network. And the active transportation plan that is the city, the law of the city of Emeryville for, in terms of bicycle boulevards, tells us that we defer to NACTO vis-a-vis the amount of traffic on our bike boulevards. So, what does NACTO say about the amount of traffic? It says, no more than 1,500 vehicle trips per day on a bike boulevard. I spoke to Councilmember Solomon about this before he was on the council, because he used to be on the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, the BPAC, the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee. And, oh, okay, got interrupted for a second. Okay. So, 1,500 vehicle trips per day is the maximum allowed by NACTO standards, and the city of Emeryville signs on to NACTO standards. And I want to make sure that this doesn't get forgotten. I mean, I brought this up countless times, and this, the last time the city of Emeryville conducted a traffic count on a bike boulevard was 2019. That's way too long. And so, anybody that would be on the BPAC, I mean, I was kind of disappointed that Mr. Solomon, Council, now Councilmember Solomon, formerly BPAC Member Solomon, was kind of disappointed that you didn't take this to heart, but it puts bicycles in harm's way traffic like that, and so, that's my comment.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, Vicky Josul again. I'm a former member of the Housing Committee, and one thing I wished we had done is follow-up on that affordable housing. The developers are great, and they promised us everything, and, but after they leave, they sign off on to management companies that are the lowest bidders. And unfortunately, the tenants at the affordable housing buildings are, I feel underserviced. I live next to the Ambassador Laundry Rentals, and those, the people there, when they have problems, don't really have a very good management way to contact the management. I've come to the Housing Committee before, and I, I realize the city doesn't really have any leverage over those, the managers of the affordable housing afterwards. But if, in some way, those people have rights, the tenants in the affordable housing buildings have rights when they deal with the management, it would be better. Like, I'll just say, what, some of the problems that they had was people smoking in the non-smoking building, smoking pot in the building, and that enforcement, the battery going out on the elevator for, for weeks, the bat, there's one elevator with no backup generator, and people who need wheelchairs and stuff that are stranded in that building. There's so many things that happen there, locks that are left unattended, broken with, people can break into their places and people don't have lock repair. And they, if you go to Ambassador, the management people are there two mornings a week. I can't even tell them now, the side of their building has been graffiti next to my house. I tried to go there to just get the name of the paint so I could paint it, and it, I can't reach them. So, I don't know how the tenants can reach them, because I, I can go there anytime during the day to try to reach them, and I can't reach them. So, if there's rights that the tenants have for that, I'd love to see it.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public? Okay, I'll bring this back to the council for deliberation. Members, you have in front of you a Attachment A, listing the applicants in the far-left column, and the roles that we're looking to fill. So, I think we can just go down the, the list. So, first is the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, where we had Julie Flynn in attendance. So, we're looking for a community member and a business rep or community member for, community member for 2025, and then a business rep, community member through 2026. Member Priforce?
Well, I would recommend Julie Flynn. Really amazing background, was very impressed by your portfolio. And Piper Cook was highly recommended by Celeste Burrows, and so, I would recommend those two.
Was that a motion?
Was that a motion, member Priforce?
No.
Member Solomon?
I'm, I'm, I will make a motion, but yeah, thank you, Julie, for being here and putting your name in, and I agree with Councilmember Priforce, you know, impressive background, and I think we met when I was door-knocking, and we took a very slow bike ride with your daughter down the street. So, I can confirm that the entire family does bike. And to, also second, Councilmember Priforce, so I would, I would suggest that Julie Flynn be the county, a community member with the term through 2026. And then, given that we only have a few months left of the term through 2025, my suggestion would also be for Piper Cook. All of the applicants seemed interested and qualified, but I think one of the discussions that's been had on BPAC over the last few years is a focus on, you know, it's both bike and pedestrian, so I think having, Piper indicated that, you know, she is primarily a pedestrian, I think having of, someone who can bring that perspective would be very valuable. So, I will make a motion to appoint Julie Flynn to the term through 2026, and Piper Cook for the community member through 2025.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
I'm sorry, Mayor, is there a second? I didn't hear.
I can second.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Priforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the Commission on Aging, and we heard from Diane Woods, and we're filling one position for the resident through 2026. Member Welch?
I'd be happy to make a motion to appoint Diane Woods to the Commission on, or Commission of Aging, with term commencing March 4, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026.
Member Priforce?
So, I am not a fan of it just being one person, but that's not on you, that's on us. Yeah, so, but yeah, I would also second. Thank you for, for providing your time to us, and your ideas were great, and so, thank you for sharing your experience.
We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Priforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon? Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the Housing Committee, and we had four members in attendance, Sam Gould, Tyler Hill, Dolores Johnson, and Sam Gould, Tyler Hill, Dolores Johnson, and Fran Quatell. Member Pryforce?
I would recommend Tyler Hill and Dolores D. Johnson. The Housing Committee definitely needs some diversity, and diversity of experiences. But I do want to say this, that in terms of the, the responses to the question on tenant protections, I would caution that applicants dig a little deeper into what is something actionable. It is a thing that happens a whole lot with, with minority populations, low-income populations, any population that's marginalized, wherein we place the onus on them. Well, the thing that's, that they're experiencing is because they don't know their rights. Well, no, the landlord knows their rights. It's that the landlord isn't following their rights. And so, if we're, if they are a protected class in some way, then we should be doing better when it comes to how we can advocate for, for them, and actually protect them, because in some respects, they are treated differently. I believe one of our affordable housing projects, I've had conversations with the city manager. I can almost guarantee you that around this time of night, you would never want to be inside of one of our projects. Here in Emeryville, it's so problematic. It's, it's like something out of New Jack City. It is, it, it, the playground is abysmal. They have an in, inside playground. And I won't share what the building is. Just, I just, I don't want to embarrass some of the tenants. But the tenants have shared with me consistently how horrible it is. In terms of, well, I will say is that the, those who do run the property is EAH Housing. And so, EAH Housing, you're on notice with me, especially since you, you want to expand your number of properties. And you do do well with Avalon and some other properties, but that particular property is, is, it's pretty abysmal. And so, and that is just a little bit of the experiences that low-income tenants have, wherein they are consistently disenfranchised. They're in a constant state of fear, because they don't have any protections to. And many of the protections that were quoted as being state do not apply to affordable housing tenants. They, they, those protections are for non-affordable housing tenants. But remember, the state does not provide those kind of protections. And so, it, so even like rent cap, right? No, does not apply to BMR. Does not apply, right? And so, that is just one of the many protections that is lacking when it comes to below-market renters. And I, and I can't stress this enough, because they are not here. They're not on the Housing Committee. And so, someone has to speak for them, and I'm expecting you all to speak for them. And so, reach out to them, connect with them, find out what's going on. If you need help to connect with them, I can definitely do that. You know, Vicky can do that. I mean, so, a lot of people can help you connect with these folks, and they will tell you their lived experiences of what it is to be a BMR tenant, especially with our low-income, and low-low-income home units, what their experience is like in Emeryville. And so, I just want to stress what is actionable in terms of tenant protections for them. But going back to my recommendation, Tyler Hill and Dolores D. Johnson is my, my recommendation in terms of Housing Committee.
Is that a motion?
No, oh, I'm not making a motion. I'll, I'll second whoever makes that motion.
Okay, I just wanted to make one comment. Fran, I actually really did appreciate your perspective that you bring, especially on the, the question of the housing stock and how policies like insurance apply to those. I think that's very important. I think there's probably more under the purview of housing, and maybe that question is probably better. It definitely has bearing on the, the price of housing. The price of insurance trickles down to renters the same way it does homeowners. And it's one of the biggest issues facing our city and, and the state, and the question of housing in general. And it's probably better handled in a forum like the Budget and Governance Committee. So, I, I do appreciate your, your comment being open to express your, the, the strength of your thinking in joining the committee and stepping away if that's needed. Members?
I'll move resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville appointing Tyler Hill and Dolores D. Johnson as community members to serve on the Housing Committee for terms commencing March 4, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, and amending the full year 2024-25 local roster of boards, commissions, and committees accordingly.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon? Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, the ETMA. Members, any comments or discussion or motions?
I'll move resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville appointing Brooks Jessup and Robert Lee as residents to serve on the Emeryville Transportation Management Association for terms commencing May 1, 2025, and ending April 30, 2028, and amending the 2025 city roster of county, regional, and statewide board bodies accordingly.
I second, but Councilmember Pryforce had his hand raised. Mr. Mayor.
Member Pryforce?
I just want to say that I am not a fan of people joining multiple committees, because we need to have some, you know, different folks to be able to fill those committees. But Brooks Jessup is just one of those people who I really do believe is just going to shake things up and ask some real questions in terms of problem-solving. And I always appreciate when any applicant comes forth and says, "Hey, Emeryville is great." Because most people just stop with, "Oh, Emeryville's great." But, you know, I, I appreciate when someone says, "Emeryville's great, but this is what we can do better. And here's a problem that I've identified." And especially since you're, you know, you, you, you know, you talked about the Emery, and, and a bus shelter at the Emery is, is needed. And, and I can see why that's, you know, particularly important to you. But I, I appreciate when people can bring their actual lived experiences to, to this body, because we know that it's something that resonates with you. So, I would like to second that motion. Was it already seconded, or no?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The time is 8:25. This meeting is adjourned. We'll be taking a five-minute recess before the next meeting.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
The time is 8:32. This is a meeting of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here.
Approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Any ex parte communications, members? Seeing and hearing none. This is now the time for public comment. Members of the public, please come to the podium. Seeing no members of the public, we next have the consent calendar. Members, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no action items. The time is 8:33. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:16 PM. This is the regular meeting of the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here.
Next, we have approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion?
Moving approval of the final agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Next, we have a special order of the day. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville proclaiming the month of March, 2025, as American Red Cross Month. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, when we recognize the compassion of people in Emeryville and renew our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in need. And the American Red Cross volunteers have stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best of humanity in times of crisis, as Clara Barton, founder of the American Red Cross, did 140 years ago. And the volunteers, blood and platelet donors, supporters, shine a beacon of hope in people's darkest hours, delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting service members, veterans, and their families, saving lives with first aid, CPR, AED, and other skills, or delivering international aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crises. And with 1,638 volunteers in Alameda County, the American Red Cross assisted or responded to 163 disasters, assisting 305 families. And through our Sound and Alarm Program, they installed 988 smoke alarms, making 291 homes safer. And they trained 2,544 youth and adults through Pedro the Penguin and Preparedness Programs. And Alameda County residents donated 30,572 units of life-saving blood, hosted 1,154 blood drives, and trained 13,893 citizens in first aid, CPR, AED, aquatics, and provided 455 case services to military members and their families. families, and provided humanitarian aid internationally. And they did this work to uplift our community, and it's made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it is needed. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of their remarkable service, and we ask everyone to join in their commitment to care for one another. Now, therefore it be that the City Council of the City of Emeryville, that the month of March, 2025, is proclaimed American Red Cross Month in the city, and I encourage all residents of Emeryville to reach out and support its humanitarian mission, as proclaimed by the Mayor of the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, March fourth, 2025. Thank you, and please come to receive the proclamation.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, my name is Richard Faitman, and I'm here with Cheryl Drinkwater. We are both volunteers with the Red Cross. We are delighted to be here with you during March, when we honor the American Red Cross for its humanitarian commitment to serve communities across the United States and around the world. Thank you for your continued support of the American Red Cross. When help can't wait during emergencies, American Red Cross volunteers step up to ensure those in need receive relief and care. The American Red Cross enjoys a long history of partnering with the City of Emeryville to benefit the community. In 2024, specifically, the American Red Cross responded to nine, nine home fires in Emeryville, providing displaced residents with comfort and hygiene items, as well as financial assistance after the disaster. Emeryville volunteer residents assisted in sound the alarm programs, as you mentioned, events where we installed smoke alarms in homes. The American Red Cross participated in emergency preparedness events and fair, fairs nearby, where we met with local residents, talk about disaster preparedness, our program, and volunteer opportunities. The American Red Cross provided a shelter training event at ECCL this August, showing Emeryville participants how to work with the Red Cross in shelter setup and management. In Emeryville, there were three blood drives, and a total of seventy-two units of blood were collected, added to the rather larger stash of blood that was connected through the county. There are fixed location sites in Oakland, Fremont, and Pleasanton that run every day. These are a few of examples of activities we have engaged in during the last year. We look forward to partnering with the city in events during the coming year. Our community counts on the American Red Cross for help every day, and supporting our community is at the heart of what we do. Working with partners like the City of Emeryville helps us to continue our mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. On behalf of our volunteers and those we serve, we want to thank the City of Emeryville and the City Council for standing with the American Red Cross. Thank you very much.
And we thank you. Next, we have announcements. There's no public comment on proclamations. Next, we have announcement of commission and committee vacancies.
Mayor and council, I don't have any announcements tonight. Thank you.
Next, we have council members' special announcements or reports on meeting attendance. Seeing none, the city managers' report?
No report this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Members, any ex parte communications on the items on the consent or our action Seeing and hearing none. Now is the time for public comment on the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Members of the public, please come to the podium. You'll have two minutes.
I was gonna say something nice about the Red Cross, but apparently I can't do that. There's a farm in Emeryville. It's called Animal Farm. Now, it was previously run by a human, but the human was a tyrant, and so the animals took over the farm. And they proclaimed, because they were treated badly by the farmer, and the animals proclaimed that all, after they took over and drove the farmer out, they proclaimed that all animals are equal. And then time went on, then the pigs moved into the farmer's house, and the other animals had to stay out in the barn. The house is much nicer than the barn, and so trouble began to arise, and the animals in the barn were unhappy because they were being treated worse. And so the pigs made a new pronouncement that all animals are equal, except some animals are more equal than others. And that's the story that we have in Emeryville. All city council members are equal, except some city council members are more equal than others. Councilmember Mora, the mayor, he's more equal than Councilmember Pryforce. You both committed the same FPPC violation, but exactly the same, but Councilmember Pryforce had to pay with a censure and sanction, whereas Councilmember Mayor Mora did not pay whatsoever. So Councilmember Mora is more equal than Councilmember Pryforce. All animals are equal, except some animals are more equal than others. And that's the city we live in now. There's no taking this back, unless the four of you censure and sanction Mr. Mora for his violations of the FPPC.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next, we have the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no public hearings. We have one action item. This is the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending the 2024-2025 general budget and financial policies.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, Brian Mora, excuse me, from Regional Government Services, finance consultant for the city. Tonight, we'll go through a brief PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. As is indicated in the staff report, this report was already reviewed by your Budget Advisory Committee and your Budget and Governance Committee. Next slide. So to start out, talking about the city's budget, the city has a two-year biannual budget process. It involves the general fund, the non-general fund, and your capital budgets. Right now, you're in the middle of a two-year cycle for 2023-25. The 2023-24 budget process is complete, and the 24-25 process is now at the mid-year stage. It's also important to note that the next budget cycle of 25-27 is now underway with work and financing with your department head team. Next slide. The city's budget principles are shown in your annual comprehensive financial report on page thirteen. The most salient item in this list is the first one, which is the city's budget principles, which were adopted in the 1990s, are to ensure that current year's expenditures should be supported with current year revenues. Next slide. There's also fund balance policies in several of your funds. There's the Economic Uncertainty Reserve, Fund 275, which is designed to provide for economic downturns and disasters, and has a target of fifty percent of general fund annual expenditures. The disaster reserve, Fund 277, is designed for funding during a disaster, has a target reserve of five million, and it permits the city manager to access these funds without prior council approval during a disaster. And then finally, we have the general fund unassigned balance, Fund 101. This is the so-called working capital of the city, and this is designed to bridge the gap between expenses paid and revenues during the year. What's noteworthy here is, unlike the first two funds, this fund does not have, at the present time, a fund balance target. Next slide. The Government Finance Officers Association, the so-called GFOA, has a fund balance policy for the general fund. It says that governments in general should have such a policy. They recommend that the minimum policy for most agencies be two months of regular general fund revenues or expenses, which works out to about seventeen percent. It also has a provision that larger agencies, namely states and major cities, may be eligible to have a lower amount. Next slide. These are comments that, in our research, we found over the last five years repeatedly noting that the city has a structural budget deficit in the general fund. In 2022, during the Measure O campaign, it was said that the city has a structural deficit in that year that actually started two years prior in 2020, and that addressing these deficits at that time included deferring capital projects. In the current budget, this issue was raised yet again, saying that the projected deficits are likely to be addressed using the ending general fund balance, but they are not sustainable, and either new revenue or reduced expenditures will be needed. Next slide. So here's a page out of the city's budget, pages nine and ten, and there's a couple of significant things to see here. First of all, you'll notice that in this five-year projection, the city is projecting a deficit in the general fund for all five years, from 2023-24 through 27-28. The deficit varies from 2.7 million to 6.4 million. You also see that the general fund unassigned balance, the working capital, drops during this projection from eighteen percent in the positive to negative sixteen percent, or negative nine million dollars in the final year. Conversely, the two economic and disaster reserves remain at or significantly above the fifty percent target. Next slide. So here's a look at last year's general fund budget versus the actual, and essentially the budget was originally adopted by the council with a $5.2 million deficit. It actually ended the year at a $7.2 million deficit. The main difference was a $2.1 million settlement with the IRS. Next slide. This year, the situation has worsened, primarily due to a drop in revenue. The revenues came in $5.1 million below the estimate, and expenditures went up 800,000. However, it's important to note that the expenditures also include $2 million in salary savings, so if those had not been included, the gap would have been even wider. And then we also highlight on this slide the fact that the city has a social security settlement that is pending of $3.3 million, but it is not clear at this time when that settlement may be finalized. Next slide. So here's a detailed look at general fund revenues in the current year, and you can see here some of the key issues. The first is that, in this city, fees and charges are your largest general fund revenue, which is very unusual in most cities. Actually, usually, the major revenue is either sales tax or property tax, but it is not in this case, and that dropped by $4 million. It's also interesting to note that in Emeryville, this line item varies quite significantly from year to year. It can be as low as $4 to $5 million as it is this year, but in years of significant development activity, it can be as high as $10 to $13 million, which makes it very difficult for your city staff to accurately develop budgets from year to year. It also suggests that, as a practice going forward, one of the recommendations from the Budget Advisory Committee is to perhaps look at budgeting this particular revenue type at a lower level, recognizing the fluctuations. You also had a significant drop in sales tax revenue of 1.3 million. You had a drop in the cardroom tax of half a million, a drop in the real property transfer tax of 1.6 million. On the other side of the coin, there were some improvements, namely the hotel tax was up 300,000, the utility user tax was up 1.3 million, primarily due to increased electrical rates. Franchise revenues were up, and investment revenues were up almost half a million dollars. Next slide. On the general fund expenditure side of things, it's a mixed message here. Typically, the departments that had vacancies came in under budget, and the ones that did not came in at or above budget, most notably in police and fire. Next slide. Here's a look at the residual property tax revenue that the city receives. This is money that comes back to the City of Emeryville as the debts of the former redevelopment agency are paid off. At the moment, you get $6.4 million a year of this revenue, although that amount will be increasing in the future because of the refinancing of the redevelopment debt that the council approved last October. In the current scheme, half this money goes to the general fund, the other half doesn't, and as we'll talk about a little later in the report, we're recommending moving all of that money into the general fund in the future. Next slide. These are the recommendations from the Budget and Governance Committee from October of 2024. They were actually initially discussed in August of 2024, and we discussed these with the council last November, on November nineteenth. And essentially, as you see, includes reallocating the residual property tax revenue to the general fund, looking at vacant positions and contract services for savings, reducing departmental budgets, using the Economic Uncertainty Reserve to pay for the social security settlement, and using $3 million to help bridge the gap. Next slide. This is the recommended general fund strategy that we're presenting to you tonight. It's, and this has been the one that's been vetted by the Budget Advisory Committee and the Budget and Governance Committee. It is similar to what you saw last year with some additional items. So the first four items are essentially the same as what you saw last year. The fourth item is, rather than transferring money from the general fund, which, as you saw from the earlier slide, is heading towards a negative position, we're now recommending that that $5 million come out of the Economic Uncertainty Reserve, which is in a strongly positive position. We're also recommending that you take $2 million from the capital improvement fund surplus and also move that to the general fund, so a total of $7 million would be transferred into the general fund. And if you do this, this would allow the general fund unassigned balance to be at a twenty percent level, which would be actually somewhat above the GFOA standard. The sixth recommendation is to merge the Economic Uncertainty Reserve and the disaster reserve. There's a couple things going on here. First is, those two reserves overlap. They both address disasters, and it's also the case, and merging them, we think, would increase your flexibility in the future, but also it would clarify your fifty percent reserve target, because if you look at the budget and you look at your audit, what you see is these two reserves are calculated differently for purposes of the fifty percent target. Sometimes it refers to the Economic Uncertainty Fund only, and other times it refers to the Uncertainty Fund and the Disaster Fund added together. So we think if you merge these funds, in addition to increasing flexibility, you also clarify this, what does the fifty percent mean? The seventh item is, as we alluded to earlier, amending the unassigned general fund balance, Fund 101, so that now has a target every year, and the target, we would recommend, is twenty percent of your annual expenditures, somewhat above the GFOA target. And I think related to that, one of the things I would observe is that, going forward, it is important, when you look at general fund targets, to not only focus on your reserves, as you have in the past, but also to focus on the general fund itself, so you have two targets, not one. And then finally, we have a new recommendation from the Budget and Governance Committee from last week, and they recommend that you assign $3.3 million from the Economic Uncertainty Reserve for the social security settlement. As I understand the recommendation from that committee, they wanted to take it a step further than what we were recommending, and saying, take that money from that. They said, let's go ahead and assign it right now, put a fence around it, so that that money is there when the settlement occurs. Next slide. So here are some of the results of the recommended strategy. What it does, first of all, by allocating all of the residual property tax money to the general fund, is it reduces your deficit this year from 8.7 to 5.5 million. It covers thirty-five percent of the deficit, and most importantly, with ongoing funds, not one-time money. It increases, secondarily, it increases the general fund unallocated fund balance from 10 million to 11 and a half million, which brings it up to that twenty percent target figure. Third, it increases the Economic Uncertainty Reserve by combining it with the disaster reserve, so it's now at approximately $30 million. It decreases the unassigned balance in the capital fund from 20 to 18 million. It decreases the newly combined economic reserve down to 25 million, or instead of being at the 56 percent number, it would be at 47 percent, still close to the target. to the target. It establishes the twenty percent target for the unassigned general fund balance, and it also, as we noted earlier, assigns the money from the economic uncertainty reserve for the social security settlement. Next slide. So this is a quick look at what the budget numbers would look like this year in 2024, '25, if you made all of these changes. And you can see that what happens is that the general fund balance is now at twenty-one percent, just over the target. Instead of having a budget deficit, you now have a surplus of about 1.5 million. You'd be transferring in $7 million into this fund, and the economic uncertainty fund would be at forty-six percent. We did not carry through this model to the last three years, because that's work that's now underway in the new budget. However, it occurs to us, looking at this, that as we update the expenses and the revenues, that to stay at that twenty-one percent target, it is likely that you will have to do transfers in into the general fund for the next couple of years to stay at the target. Next slide. So additional budget strategies that the finance department is working on. We have ongoing analysis and audits in the areas of sales tax and utility tax with Avenue, and that generates additional money for the city during the year. Similarly, we have ongoing business license tax analysis and audits through the HDL company, which also brings in additional revenue during the year. We're having discussions with HDL Corn and Cone about doing property tax and property transfer tax analysis and audits, both because these are major revenues for the city and because we think that there's a need for increased reporting and review of these audits. Another area that we have talked about, and an area that was recommended by your Budget Advisory Committee, is to look at a cost allocation plan and master fee study. This has not been done in Emeryville in several years, and because this is your number one revenue source, it seems to us that it is time to do that. It would update the fees, and perhaps more importantly, it would also allow the general fund to recover costs to supporting the city's other 40 funds. And then there's also been some exploration of grant assistance to have departments receive grant assistance to help them with grant applications for one-time projects. Next slide. We wanted to talk a little bit about revenue measures in general, and also revenue measures in Alameda County. There's a quote here from Michael Coleman, who's the fiscal advisor for the League of California Cities, or CalCities, as they're now known. What's interesting here is last November, they had the largest number of local tax measures proposed and passed in California history with over seventy-six percent passing. Perhaps more significantly for this discussion, seven of the 14 cities in Alameda County had revenue measures on the last ballot. Fifteen were proposed, 11 were passed, and they ranged anywhere from $390,000 a year to over $47 million in Oakland for police services. Next slide. This is a detailed list of all the revenue measures in last November. It shows you the amount, from the highest to the lowest. It shows the vote for each one, whether they passed or failed. Also worth noting in this slide is that three of the revenue measures in Berkeley were actually put on the ballot by residents, and that's where you'd see the I. Those are initiative measures. Next slide. So we also wanted to give you an update on potential revenue measures. As you know, this has been a discussion that the Budget and Governance Committee had last year at both of their meetings in August and October, and we talked to you about them in November again. Basically, your next opportunity for revenue measures would be in November of 2026, and the revenue would be available to you in 2027. The cost to put a measure on the ballot, including polling, outreach, and all of that, would be around $150,000. You see the list of potential revenue measures that were discussed last year by the Budget and Governance Committee. We've also added at the bottom the vacant parcel tax, which was raised by one of the council members on November 19th. As you can see, the amount of revenue generated by these different measures varies. In some cases, like the parcel tax, it's $3.5 million a year. A quarter cent sales tax or transaction tax would be $2 million. Hotel tax, $900,000. And then we have a couple that we don't yet have estimates for. We are working with companies that do this sort of analysis and estimates, and depending on the level of interest of the council, we'll continue to pursue that. I'm going to assume that unless I hear otherwise tonight, that the list that we presented to you last year and the one we have tonight is the one that you're still interested in. And then as far as the process, what we would envision is updating the five-year model as part of the upcoming budget, having a council study session in the fall of this year to talk about these different items. It is typically the case that you only research or poll two or three items at a time, and so since you have six possibilities, we'd have to prune the list a little bit, I suspect. And then the time between the fall and the spring or summer of next year would be for research, outreach, and then the council deciding whether or not to put one or more of these measures on the ballot. Next slide. Here's the action from the Budget Advisory Committee. They supported the recommendations in the report. They wanted to make sure that the change in the residual property tax be shown as the first item. They felt that was the most important. They expressed concern about balancing the budget with vacant positions, as has happened over the last five years in this community. They also had a series of what they called longer-term recommendations, namely a more conservative approach to revenue estimates. They also felt it was important to receive revenues into the general fund rather than using a fixed amount or allocating a fixed amount to other funds. They had a proposal that, given the city's ongoing general fund shortfalls, that perhaps the city council might want to consider a practice of doing budget transfers at midyear rather than when the budget was initially adopted, to make sure that the budget was in balance before a transfer was made. Interesting concept. They felt strongly about updating the cost allocation plan and the fee study, and they also wanted to have more detailed information on sales tax revenue provided to the council and the public, and you'll notice in Attachment Six that we did provide that to you tonight. Next slide. Budget and Governance Committee met last week. They recommended the first seven strategies in the report that you saw earlier, and as I noted before, they added the eighth strategy about assigning the $3.3 million in the uncertainty reserve, rather than just indicating that that was their recommendation. They also felt similar to the Budget Advisory Committee that, once the general fund is in balance, it would be a good idea to try to move away from the practice of balancing the budget with vacant positions. They asked for more detail on revenue options. They felt that when it came to the vacant home tax, that they felt that perhaps should be given a lower priority than some of the other revenue options, and there are a couple of reasons there. One was that those tax proceeds usually are not put in the general fund. They're usually put in a fund related to the tax. So if it's a vacant commercial building, usually you'd put that in the economic development fund. If it's a vacant home tax, you might put it in a housing fund. And so the thought there was, it's an interesting concept, but maybe since it's not necessarily related to the general fund, it might get a lower priority. But again, it's up to the council on how you wish to proceed on that. And then there was also a request for some benchmark information on the fund balance policies of local cities. Next slide. So here's a quick comparison we put together in the last couple days about local cities. You'll notice the first five cities are cities that are similar in size to Emeryville, anywhere from Piedmont at 10,000 population and Emeryville 12,000 population to El Cerrito at 25,000 population, and we also put in Richmond and Berkeley. It was a request for that, even though those cities are significantly larger than Emeryville. There's a couple of things worth noting here. First of all, you'll notice that Emeryville, at the moment, is the only city on this list that does not have a general fund unassigned balance policy. Everybody else has one at somewhere between 10 to 25 percent, and as you know, that's one of our recommendations. Second, you'll see that when it comes to the reserve policy, three cities are between 20 to 30 percent, two cities do not have a policy at all, and then two are at 50 percent, Pinole and Emeryville, although Pinole's actual reserve is only at 29 percent this year, primarily because they also have an $8 million budget gap prior to their passage of a half cent sales tax. So with the passage of the sales tax in Pinole, presumably that their deficit will be lower, but not completely addressed. And then you see Emeryville is unique in having a reserve balance of north of 50 percent. So again, an interesting benchmark comparison. Next slide. So next steps in this process, we're presenting this report to you tonight for consideration and action. We recommend the eight items that you saw in the earlier slide. Second, we are proposing to come back to you on the 18th with detailed midyear adjustments for all funds, not just the general fund, and then we will continue working on the two-year budget and the updated five-year projection between now and May and June. Next slide. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Members, any questions about the presentation or the eight recommended actions? Maybe we could get those eight up on the screen. It might be helpful to reference.
Next one. There we are.
Any questions, members? Member Pryforce.
Thank you. Yeah, ever since you've been a part of the Emeryville family, I've felt that your level of transparency and truth telling about where we're at and where we can be. The consolidation of the economic uncertainty reserve and the disaster reserve, what are, to be clear, would the target still be 50 percent if we are making, if we're doing this comprehensive strategy, or are we adjusting the target? Or can we adjust that target?
Well, a couple of things. The target's up to the council. You can certainly adjust it anytime. We didn't change the 50 percent target, but I think frankly, as we're walking through this, it was very confusing, to me at least, and perhaps to others on the staff, what exactly it meant. Because if you looked at the audit, it said you add the two together. If you looked at the budget, the first page said they're separate, and the second page said you audit together. So I said, okay, we got three different theories of the case here. So we can certainly keep the 50 percent, but presumably, we could add them together. The other reason behind adding them together is I noticed that there was a bit of overlap between the economic uncertainty reserve, which said it was for downturns and disasters, and the other policy was also for disasters. So I said, it seems like we're doing that. The one unique piece in the disaster policy was this policy that the city has of allowing the city manager to spend up to the full $5 million in that fund prior to going to the council. And I think the logic to that seems to be, if you're having a disaster, you don't want to wait till the next council meeting, you want the city manager to spend it. So we're recommending to keep that provision in the newly merged fund. But we also felt that if you put them together, and let's say in the future you didn't have an economic downturn, but you did have a disaster, you might want to have the full $30 million behind you for that disaster and not just the $5 million. So it seemed to us a little artificial to separate them the way they were separated, but that's the logic behind the recommendations.
Member Pryforce.
And my understanding is that the target that we have of the 50 percent is a bit higher than cities comparably, even cities our size.
That's correct. As you saw from the earlier slide, Pinole was the only one we could find. In my experience, I've worked with one or two other cities that have a target that high, but for the most part, most cities are in the 20 to 30 percent range. I think it's fair to say that other cities, if they heard you guys had a 50 percent reserve, they'd be quite jealous, because, you know, they clearly don't. And you also saw in that earlier slide, by the way, there's a couple of cities that don't have a reserve policy at all, that what they do is they depend on that unassigned general fund balance to be both their reserve and their working capital, which, again, depending on your point of view, to me, that's cutting it maybe a little too close to the edge, but again, that is the practice in some cities. So I think the fact that you have, you know, 50 percent in reserves, and now we're proposing another 20 percent on the general fund, that's like a total of 70 percent. That's a lot of, you know, resources. Although I think in realistic terms, in the next couple of years, until we get the general fund back in balance, it is likely that both the capital fund and the economic uncertainty is going to have to contribute more to the general fund. And then really, the strategy for the departments and the city manager, and ultimately the council, is going to be, how do you bridge that gap? Do you reduce your expenses? Do you raise revenues? Do you do some combination thereof? It's a pretty high hurdle, certainly, but again, it's something to focus on. And I think it's, you know, the other thing is, it's unfortunate that this has been brought up year after year after year, and it hasn't really been addressed. I was a little surprised to see that all the way back to 2020, you had annual budget messages saying, this is a problem, you can't go on, this is a problem, I can't go on. And I thought, okay, at what point are you going to tackle it? And I think, given the fact that we're so far over the numbers this year in terms of being over expended and revenues dropping, that this shows you what happens in a situation like that, where you're getting these warnings. But in the past years, what has happened is because of vacancies and because of revenues coming in over or expenses coming in under, you've been able to sort of balance along the way. And this year, because the problem was so big, you weren't able to get there this time. And that's kind of what happens in one of these structural gaps if you continue to, you know, kind of kick the can down the road, if you want to use that analogy. So I think that's kind of where you are, and so it's a good time, I think, ahead of the budget, to say, let's talk about how we can balance this year's budget, even though one-third of the money, a little bit more, is ongoing and two-thirds is not. It's a starting point, and then we can talk about down the road, how you're going to tackle this in future years.
Member Pryforce.
So if we were to, like, reduce it to maybe about 40 percent, we would still be above most cities. It would still be a good sweet spot. But it would allow us to, yeah, because I'm thinking about that negative nine percent that even with the adjustments. Outside of the recommendations, hopefully, we do get there, but I'm still thinking about, how do we prevent this from happening?
Yeah, I mean, I think a couple of things. One is that it is likely that in the next two years, we're going to come back to you, or the finance folks are going to come back to you and tap into that fund some more and tap into the capital some more to keep things afloat until you can get to the next revenue measure election. And I think that if there are not significant reductions in this budget, your other approach is in fact to do one or more of the revenue measures. Now, I think it's worth noting, if you think about one of the earlier slides, if you move the residual property tax, that cuts your deficit to only five and a half million. And as you saw from the earlier slide, if you took the sales tax and the parcel tax, that is in fact five and a half million. So there are ways to get to the finish line, although, you know, the expenses continue to increase, and yet most of your revenues, at least at the moment, are not. Although, the combination of doing the audits, looking at the cost allocation plan, and looking at other opportunities are always, we're trying to kind of nibble at this, you know, kind of take a piece off the rock every so often and try to bring you closer and closer to where you need to be. That's kind of the game plan.
Any other questions? I'd like to open public comment on this item. Members of the public, you'll have two minutes.
I'd like to tell the city manager to please fix this light here. To the city manager, it's been flickering for a couple of months now, this light. So the elephant in the room here, of course, as I've reported on in the Emeryville toddler, is the but, the business tax. Emeryville's business tax is 0.1 percent of gross receipts, the lowest in the Bay Area by far. Okay, we're leaving millions of dollars on the table because our business tax is so low. We need that, we need those millions, as Mr. Murrah just let us know. But then, of course, on top of that is the business tax cap, which is a gift to the biggest businesses in Emeryville, who, after a certain amount of money, pay zero taxes on their gross receipts. I have a small business in Emeryville. I've had it for 35 years, and every penny I make, I have to pay taxes on in Emeryville. But Pixar, for instance, and other big businesses, well, they don't have to pay money on every penny they make because of this business cap. So it's completely regressive taxation. You know, it's like a Paul Ryan wet dream. It's the ultimate regressive taxation. I mean, most Republicans would be too ashamed to install the business tax that we have in Emeryville because it's too regressive. So we're leaving millions of dollars on the table, and we need the money, so I suggest we have a flat tax, make every business pay the same rate. The small businesses should pay the same rate as the big businesses, instead of as it is right now, which is the big businesses pay much which is the big businesses pay a much lower rate. And it's just completely unfair and ridiculous. And it's a leftover from previous city council members. But the three of you have let this slide into your shame. And you cut me off for two minutes to have more to say.
Thank you for your comment.
Let me say.
Okay, members. I'll open this for a member deliberation or if you'd like to make a motion. Member Pryforce.
So there's a... I remember as a kid, there was this, like, Looney Tunes cartoon of this mama buzzard. And I think that the character is called Beak Buzzard. And it was just like this overgrown bird who didn't want to leave the nest. And he was just so funny. He was like, no, mama, no, mama, I don't want to leave. I don't want to leave, you know? And so, and the mother's like, keep trying to push the bird out. And so I applaud Mr. Mora and my council colleagues in finally addressing this issue. When I came aboard as city council member, I remember the early debriefs that I had, and I looked at the numbers, and I kept saying, there's something wrong here. And I remember even being corrected that, oh, we're fine, everything's fine. Or council meetings. I mean, there's video evidence of me being corrected, probably more than one occasion, that everything is fine. No, mama, no, mama. You know, I think that us finally dealing with this, addressing it... And I think that the dealing with this and addressing this is not just, here are these solutions. And I do respect these strategies. But I think that in this discussion around the business tax cap, that we are at least having discussions about it, that we are at least studying this, we are at least looking at this, rather than, oh, well, you know, council members have done this before, and we did this before, and we did this before. And I felt that we were sort of caught in a twilight zone of denial as relates to our budgeting process. And so I highly recommend that we take on this strategy. It's honestly a little bit too conservative, fiscally conservative for me. But I'm willing to bend to support that we make these recommendations. I do would like to see us maybe get to that 40% target rather than having it so high. Just from a business standpoint, that we need money to make money. And I think that, you know, I also respect the budget committee's recommendation that we just don't do this like musical chairs when it comes to staffing in order to meet some of our budgetary woes. And so that is... Yeah, so I just recommend that we move forward with this. And I'm just glad that we're reaching a point of maturity where we're ready to, like, now leave the nest.
Member Pryforce, is that a motion for the recommended strategy that we have up?
No, but I will second the motion.
Members, do we have a motion or other comments? We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have department head reports. Do we have any updates?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is my report on Planning Commission actions at their February 27th meeting. Five of six members of the commission were present, with Commissioner Chafe absent and one vacancy, which you filled just this evening. The commission reviewed the 2024 General Plan Annual Progress Report, including the Housing Element Annual Progress Report and the Housing Successor Report, and recommended the city council approve those reports for submittal to the state. This will be on the city council's March 18th agenda. The commission also discussed committee composition, how to enhance community representation on the Planning Commission as part of the implementation of Housing Element Program EE. And this discussion is also being paralleled with all of the community advisory committees. Will be summarized and presented to the council at a later date. This concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, members? Next, we have Member Pryforce.
Well, I just want to say that I'm glad that this sort of diversification, inclusion in our committees was already present in the Housing Element. And so that was something I did not know. And then when I was made aware, I... And that was before I think I came aboard. And so kudos to those who made sure that that was there. Thank you.
Next, we have future agenda item requests. Members, would anybody like to propose a future agenda item? Member Pryforce.
So this was a little outside of my purview, but we recently had an issue where I believe there were Emeryville residents, and I could be corrected, who were involved in assaulting pets, animals. And, yeah, and so it was pretty bad on social media. And, yeah, and then it was... I believe it was confirmed that they were Emeryville residents. I don't know if this incident happened in Emeryville. Oh, Pedro, did you know anything about it?
I recall the news... The incident happened in Pittsburgh, but the arrests happened in Oakland.
Okay. But the residents themselves, were they... Were they Emeryville residents?
Chief over there.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, wait, what? Oakland residents? Okay, good, okay. So my correction, there were Oakland residents. And so hopefully, that will be corrected online as well. But the interesting thing, it became a conversation that everywhere I walked, and people like stopped me, and they were asking me about it, which is why I think I probably reached out to you,